Hey Javier.
Hey Dan.
Okay, just making sure you can hear me.
We got a three camera setup thanks to Nancy. We have this.
Fancy name.
The whole, the whole.
It was just asking if we could keep it to a dollar.
Hold it, Thomas.
Get out of here on time.
And then we have.
I just, he said it's up to us, so I'm just trying to get by.
You can do me a favor, Dan, after this.
Solidarity.
Just let me know how the audio sounds from the front of the council chambers.
Okay, will do, will do.
All right, I'm going to call. All right.
We have a lot of survey slides.
Okay.
Off the press there, more on the way.
All right, I am calling the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 5th at seven oh five. Can we establish?
Yeah.
Right, there we go. We've established a quorum. Could you roll call?
Yes. Molly. Lisa.
Here.
Could you say the reason and where you're to begin from?
Sure, I am in Scottsville at home because of health reasons.
Thank you. And then Matthew. Dan, could you do the same? Could you say where you're attending the meeting from remotely and reason for?
Sure. I'm here, first of all, and in, I guess, near Mineral, Virginia, and I am out of town and I will. It's a family event, so I'm here at a family event.
And then Mr. Strasser.
Here. All right. We all agree to the agenda as stated?
I move to accept the agenda as.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is the audio okay on the speaker?
Yes. All right, and now we're moving on to review and approval of past meeting minutes for August 7th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes from last meeting.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and now we're going to hear from Mr. Gritsko on relevant actions by town council.
Thank you, our vice chair. First of all, you might let me know, I know where I am, sometimes the voice fades in and out, so if I fade out, it's not by design, but it'll come back in a few seconds. The most relevant thing that we did last session was to approve money to help Lincoln extend his ability to continue to serve the town and the planning commission. It was a pretty robust debate, in the end, we voted four to two as a council, and I think it's worth noting a couple things about the debate. First of all, there were a couple town counselors who thought it was more our job as the council not to do it with the help of an intern, and I disagreed with that perspective, there was actually the majority disagreed with that perspective, but there was a big discussion about what the role the planning commission is and what we should do related to the comprehensive plan, and in the end, the point of it being important to have Lincoln help with that. The other one was, we had a big conversation about interns in general, and again, there were several on the council who just were really objecting to interns at all, and one of the things we talked about, again, on the four to two side, was basically saying that interns are very commonly used in many different places. You can go back and listen to the meeting, there was a long conversation about it, and one of the things that's also unique that we talked about was the quality that Lincoln brings to the town, very unusual to get somebody with such experience as he has, and also going for his PhD, who's done an enormous amount of work and other areas, and bringing that to the towns, and the majority of the council agreed with that view, in other words, recognizing his unique ability to bring it to the town. I also talked to our chair before the meeting, just to talk through some of the issues related to that, and then in the end, there were concerns about the budget that were brought up about that, and at the same time, because we've been between town administrators and town clerks, our town administrator explained the budget side. In fact, I think Javier, maybe you could just take a quick minute and explain how it works on the budget side to do it.
So we're having staff savings from just not having a clerk since about, I started on the 6th or the 7th of July, and then we probably expect to have a little bit more clearance with that. We have a, we had a student intern that wrapped up last Friday as a staff member, and then part of that is also savings on those benefits, so major savings is health insurance and retirement when you're not paying for a full-time staff member. So between that and also a different scale for town clerk, I think we have, I, I worked our numbers to make sure we had flexibility, especially with all the changes in staff in between interim and volunteers of summer and then interns and staff members. So I made a reasonable argument that we had more than enough funding within our administrative line to continue Lincoln's work here. I think his work is really collaborative to getting everybody together and working and has led to some creativity in this approach. I think we're building a good comprehensive plan that will, will get really busy towards the end of the year, but we'll be really happy about what we accomplish. So I think having him as part of a team is beneficial for you guys as much as it is for me.
Thank you, thank you, and one thing I will say, maybe in closing, at least for my part, would be, I talked to our chair, I should say, we communicated over the last week about this issue, and she felt it was important that you all understand. It was a really fairly rigorous debate as a council that we had on this, it was very long, it was on all, a lot of different issues, and then council voted in an affirmation of the planning commission's role, of Lincoln's assistance, and a thanking for what he did, so very, very supportive of this, and we're very excited that he is doing what he's doing, and so that, the council, and I think there were other issues we dealt with, but that was by far what was most important to the planning commission.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gritsko, I really appreciate it. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and serve the town, I really enjoy the role I'm in, I really appreciate Javier's support also. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and what?
Go ahead, Mr. Gritsko.
Just the last thing I was going to say is, is, and one of the things that's important that we recognize about this is that the council on behalf of the town, it's not us individually, but we as a council affirmed your role and also the planning commission's diligence on this project. And so I would just say, you feel it's not about any individual person, it's about the council as a whole has affirmed the work that you're doing, what the planning commission is doing, and I think that, just so you know, planning commission, their support on the council on this project, and the, the work of the town administrator helped make this happen, both previous and current, to help make this happen, and Lincoln, we're super excited to have you help us finish it.
Great, and I understand we need to focus on getting a draft to the town council by the end of the calendar year? I think that one might have been your question.
I was actually going to ask, like, how long does it extend your contract with the town to, is it to the completion of this project?
So we scoped out a timetable for Lincoln with time, and that extends through the end of the calendar year. So that sticks within previous timelines we've shared with you in the town council, with ambitious goal of trying to wrap it up by the end of the calendar year. So as Lincoln said, presenting a draft to town council was something that they wanted clearly from us, but that sticks within our intent, our best intentions with our scheduling since the beginning. We were looking at a year process to get this wrapped up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd also like to piggyback on that and say that Lincoln has just caught so many things that we wouldn't have caught on the planning commission. You know, Javier hasn't had the time, I, I'd really like to make sure that we understand just how much he does in that role, and he's been doing it alone because he hasn't had a town clerk to help him. Aside from Amelie helping out with minutes, which they kind of gave a hard time about that, too. There's a lot, there's a lot that has to be done, and this is something that's required by the state, and we only have to do it every five years, so let's do it right. I think we've had a lot of great conversations come from it, and it's come at such an important time because as a town, we're having so many conversations, we've had so many conversations conversations over the last year about what we want our town to look like. This is going to fill in a lot of those blanks and really set a path for us, so let's make sure we do this right. So thank you, Lincoln, for everything that you've done, and just this morning at 9:00 AM, I was on a Zoom meeting with Lincoln and Javier where we were meeting with the County of Albemarle Planning Department to talk through their comp plan with them and talk about our role in their comp plan and how we can collaborate in the future. Very important meeting, and you know, Javier can only do so much, so Lincoln's really helped to drive some of this stuff, and it's been great having someone so knowledgeable on the team. So thank you, Town Council, for supporting this, it's very necessary, and I think the, I think you guys on the planning commission agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, I don't want to be left unsaid that I thank you, Lincoln, as well. I think we're all very happy with everything. The one thing I wanted to ask you, Javier, when you were talking about looking over the budget and running the numbers to see if this would, this kind of staff shortfall might help cover the expenses, the extra time that we need with Lincoln. Did you, just in the interest of oversight and all of that, did you put together these numbers in a report for the town council? Were they ready to see?
Yeah.
The actual numbers on that?
So I presented different scenarios with, when I was thinking we might get hiring and even offer to delay a little bit if it helped out with getting that budget in. So I went really into get specifics with that to make sure I had enough, because we, we've had a weird calendar year. So we had an interim come off, an additional help, me coming on to a different role. Lincoln, like, it's much more movement than usually you have in that staff. It was, for a while, it was just mad at me, and that makes it a little bit easier to do your payroll, but, but I looked at it closely and presented on and I worked it on it. So I feel pretty.
And I just wanted to make sure that that was kind of what we were going for is some backup on that.
Yeah, it will stay within, I really wanted to make sure that I, we could stay within budget and also have Lincoln and complete our plan. Class half full of batting less staff.
Is with that in mind, is there a plan to get a town clerk?
Yeah, so we have a closed session tomorrow.
Okay.
So we're moving as quickly as we can.
Right, perfect, thank you. All right, any other relevant matters from town council?
I would say that's by far the most important area.
And then I think Lisa's on that.
Yeah, also, I got an update from Eileen that the councillor Morse, that the new website is up and running, and I attended an orientation so that I could see about how we can edit, so we have access. If somebody would like to volunteer to be a person that can edit the website and upload content relevant to planning commission, let me know, and I can get you a login for that.
Okay. All right, moving on to matters from the public, is there anybody online?
The James Exchange. We haven't seen anything in the chat or any Zoom.
Okay, all right, closing the matters from the public and moving on to old business, which is a continued discussion of the pop plan.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So for those members online, just email me the slide if you'd like to follow along or share the slides also through the screen. You can see the slide on the screen now, for those online. Okay, great, so this is the proposed agenda, we have a lot of things, a lot of ongoing items to talk about. Most important is probably the community engagement matters, recapping the recent workshops we've had, then planning, setting dates for workshops we're going to have, and you know, really setting the number of those workshops so we can plan to finish this on time. So starting off with community engagement, the survey analysis. Okay, so I mentioned that the survey is still live, our subscription renews in two days. So I'd like to go through the, the results so far, and I would recommend we make a decision whether to close the online survey, or we could keep a paper survey running. We can manually insert those results into an Excel chart that we download from Survey Monkey. We could close the book on the survey today and move on, or we could keep both running, and so maybe we look at the results as a brand. But we have done a lot of research, outreach with the survey, for instance, the James Exchange has been around so much to this field. We've had an advertisement for two months in the Scottville Monthly, Missy also wrote an article in the Scottville Monthly. Amelie has posted QR codes around town. We've also put hard copies of the survey at the library, a few other places. We've gotten so far one hard copy back from one resident of town. That hard copy is floating around, I think it's just nice to pick up that hard copy and read it. And those results I manually entered into the online survey, that's an option to do that. So those are all incorporated what I'm going to show right now. So far, you know, we haven't been able to really get the QR codes to Airbnb's because we don't know exactly how many Airbnbs we have, right? And instead, hasn't, we haven't really had a chance to focus on that, able to borrow. But based on your recommendation after this, we'd be glad if you let me connect this or whatever you want. So moving on to slide number six, what is your relationship with Scottsville? So this is really the decision tree of the survey that is most important, we found out. So far, we've had 103 responses total to the survey, 102 Survey Monkeys online and one printed survey that was delivered to the town offices this morning. So if you can see the stats at the bottom of the page, 29% live in the town of Scottsville, that's 30 people, and then around 67% live in the region. I'd also like to mention that we only have four tourists fill out the survey. And this might be an indicator for itself because we have not had good outreach for tourists, also maybe tourists weren't really willing to take the time to fill out the survey, so, so forth. There has been a lot of feedback throughout the compliance process, does allow me to focus more on tourism, promoting tourism. So this could be an indicator of that. I won't be giving an overview of tourist numbers today because they're not statistically significant, they're just four, four people. But for everything today, what I'll do is email the full PDF results of the survey. This is just a summary, there's multiple ways you can dive into the data, look at only, for instance, the town residents, their views, if you consider them the most important stakeholder sources. Okay. So the first question on the survey was really a zip code check. So we have 72 people, 72%, 72% of people from the Scottsville zip code. The second most popular zip code was basically Esmond and Yancy, okay? Where do you work? You can see it's quite varied, and there were also a lot of other responses. So the other responses were either they were retired or mainly they worked remotely. So in the survey construction, we could have put, I don't currently work slash retired. And I can go into the data and amend that at the end to cluster those, I guess we could call clean the data. But you can see, not a lot of people that fill out the survey working in Buckingham or Savannah. And, excuse me, the title on this slide is wrong, but it should be, on slide number nine is your income. So there's quite a lot of people that answered, prefer not to answer, and I really appreciate councillor Morse suggesting that we add that to the survey, I think that was really valuable. But basically, you can see the peak income here is really between $50,000 and $99,000 for a response to the survey, that was 24 people. Okay, so it is pretty much a bell curve, it really peaks there and goes down. There are some people that earn over $200,000 for their family household income, but we also have others that are under $30,000. Um, but we also have others that are under thirty thousand, of course. How many people live in your household? So this was a little bit surprising, uh, really focus on two people per household. You can interpret this as. Empty nesters, young professionals without kids. Or the survey really did not ask ages, uh, so we're not really able to differentiate who. This this group focuses on, but this does relate to housing. What type of housing will the two-person team be looking for?
And it would be interesting to know whether it's, you know, single parent with a child or, you know. What the demographic is.
So here we start looking at word clouds. Uh, what is your first priority for Scottsville? And you know, words clouds here, Survey Monkey is just really analyzing the different uh, words that were typed in by people. So you can imagine town was common because they're saying saying something like preserve something in town or so on so forth. So you can see uh, growth is important and businesses also very important. Uh, then on the second slide, the the second priority, also town and growth are important. Parking, possible larger businesses still there, nature, maintaining, keeping green spaces, so and so forth. So in the survey, we asked people's top three priorities. So once we close the survey, what I give you is. Go in and uh, combine all these priorities, for instance, as one another way of reading it, so we can see the biggest words. So what types of new businesses do people want? The first type of restaurants. Uh, and you might recall the previous twenty nineteen uh, results, restaurants were also very big, Mexican restaurants, especially. Um, and you know, there is a Mexican restaurant coming up to the shopping center very soon, so that's good news for.
There is.
Those people, yeah.
Yeah.
We we had a meeting earlier today that we'll share with you later. We didn't eat Mexican food.
I know, right?
So second type of business is store, um, and you can, you know, interpret that many ways, um.
Yeah.
You know, groceries there, we, there's already a food line. Are we gonna get another, you know, Kroger? Probably not. We're gonna get a Walmart? Probably not, yeah. But you can see there's a mix and then uh, also it's interesting, the bottom left hand, you can see clothes Sunday. So maybe people think, you know, businesses aren't very lively on Sunday. Mondays are difficult to eat here, you know. Javier and I went to the Chinese restaurant, but yeah, it's it's challenging. So. Overall, it seems like a lot of people are really looking for what places to eat and, you know, vibe, vibe we see, I guess we would say. And we touched upon something you've spoken about again, I think you're going towards in health services. Things have been expressed by council and have been expressed by the public, yeah. Matter, yeah. And uh, moving on to concerns, I mean, growth is also concern. Um. You know, these, these are a little bit difficult to interpret, more difficult than the others, but uh, what I suggested, I'll send around the survey results in PDF form. You can take it closer to the, and all of this stuff. Also, the second, second uh, trench of these growth, lack of something, uh, lack of businesses. You know, county, safety, tax base, housing. Okay, so next is what type of housing we got to see more of. So again, these are all respondents. And I I've tried to indicate that on each slide. So you can see uh, we asked respondents to rank their the the seven options. So you can see small, affordable, single-family homes ranks the highest of an average rank is five point eight seven. Second of all is the mid-size and then after that, the condos. You know, senior living and townhomes. Senior living is an indication of, you know, people thinking about the future. The person that filled out this survey uh, ranked uh, no housing as number one. But number two was senior housing. So they're thinking about their future, I think. They're not uh, they're not looking for growth, but they're thinking about their future. So I think this is, this is really, this is really telling. So I think our housing strategy needs to really focus on small, affordable, single-family. And uh, also a broad range of choices. I think that's another key key term. Okay, so should the comp plan encourage affordable housing? So a lot of people, yes, about a little bit over sixty percent, quite a few people know. And then quite a few people not sure. So Javier and I met with the Virginia Housing, that's a quasi-government agency from Richmond. We'll share a little bit more about that during the meeting later. But we think we can uh, help to inform the I'm not sure area and also provide more information to stakeholders through a. Through a workshop focused. Okay, what additional revenue sources do you support? So. This is uh, again, all respondents. You can see real estate tax was surprisingly. High, fifty percent of people would support that. There's a lot of others, I'd have to say. These are uh, all respondents. We can break down the data. Uh, from my memory. People that live in the town are a little bit less excited about real estate tax, but they're still uh, still quite favorable. Just surprising.
We've been lucky for so long.
Yeah. Yeah, so um, I'll just mention the other revenue sources. There's a a broad range of. Uh, things, uh, and uh, you know, you really have to read the the twenty-seven responses on that, yeah. But I think this provides information for future recommendation, recommendations or studies that could be. Done to support the proposals of the comp plan. For instance, if we wanna propose to increase walkability, how are we gonna pay for sidewalks, so on and so forth? Through grants and other methods. Uh, sidewalks are a lot of cash aid, right, grants? So we have to only have some of the money. Okay.
I still would be interested in mapping out something like a feasible walkability plan. Um, and I don't know whether that's a good stage for Dan. I know this is not our focus, but.
We talked about that with the county briefly today and they're providing us with their sidewalk study, uh. They did a sidewalk study uh, before the pandemic and then when Thomas Jefferson Planistir Commission digitized it. So we'll be able to add that into our GIS map and then print it off. They did say if you've done any sidewalks in the in the last five years, you might have to update that, but uh, we haven't done that in several plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, that could be another community engagement activity at this uh, focus group. You know, on a map, we put off a map, just like we have over there, uh, you put dots where you think sidewalks are really needed. You you put a green dot where you think the existing sidewalk is really good and you enjoy it and put a red dot where there's absolutely no sidewalk. That that's a very simple activity. Okay, so here uh, talking about, you know, population growth, uh, instead of the town residents only, I I did. Uh, break, break that down. Um, so. You can see here, uh, no growth is that one paper survey that we received this morning. But moderate growth, uh, vast majority and a lot of growth with a small percentage. But uh, I think this sends a very clear message that town residents do want some sort of form of growth. At the workshop on Saturday, uh, there was a discussion with other, you know, growth could mean multiple things. Is growth. Revitalization, is growth filling in some of the vacant uh, shophouse, you know, fronts, yeah. Down, down, downstairs, that that in some of those stakeholders mentioned, that could be a form of growth. So we don't have to think about building brand new townhouses, brand new Walmarts, things like that. So I think that that really opened up a lot of uh, conversation. I think Mr. Trust made you. So I'll mention a little bit more about that uh, nature. So for those preferring some kind of, excuse me, for the type of what kind is most favorable toward, so. Uh, businesses housing quite equal, it does, you know, not very favorable. The other is is basically uh, they they set a balanced approach. I think that that was good response, but it was two people. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention about town residents' responses, uh, we really only had. Twenty-three uh, responses is because that one one person that filled out the paper survey. Since they answered no, they they were not given the chance to answer what type of growth they want, uh. So one question they have posed is uh, twenty-three, the right sampling size that. Uh, planning commission wants for town residents. We talked a little bit about this on Saturday's workshop. Some, some people thought that. It could be larger to have a stronger mandate, yeah. So maybe I keep going here, but then we talked at the end of the section about. How we wanna improve that or we just wanna go ahead. Okay, so basically this is looking at renting or buying. Um, so thanks, uh, Commissioner Johnson, I you recommended adding the option for both renting or buying. So I think that was, that was really cool because we have quite a lot of people answering that, uh, thirty-three or so percent. Um, so you can see it's a balance of both, but there's also people that are not looking to rent or buy and I could understand that because. They might have some, you know, suitable housing already in Scottsville, of course. So I think this is a useful mix. Um, then looking at, you know, how much you're, you're really looking to spend. Uh, the peak is really between one thousand and one thousand five hundred. And of course, we could have drilled down to more details about how many bedrooms you want. So and so forth, that would have made the survey quite long.
Well, sure.
Yeah. So, but this, this is, this is useful, useful data, uh. Okay, then um, this is looking at rent, sorry, excuse me again another time, this should be buy, uh, so. Basically, uh, the peak is right around two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that's really a. Single-family house right there, yeah. Uh. So I think this again looks like a a bell curve. Uh, we have twenty-five respondents in 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 this total. Is that a good sample size? Question mark. But uh, other feedback or comments, I'd just like to provide uh, an overview of what respondents wrote at the end of the survey. Uh, I think these two are most uh, meaningful for me, you know, thank you for for your input and organizing the survey. I think this is very positive. People really felt like they were consulted. Uh, I know this slide be kind of small and you uh, could read this perhaps on your own slides, but uh. There's a lot of meaningful writing feedback, uh, and this is just uh, you know, basically three slides of. Summary, uh, I did not select everything here, but this is just a selected range. There's a lot of comments about uh, what type of growth or lack of growth people want. Uh, in terms of housing, businesses, thoughtful growth, additional sources of revenue. Historical town, someone has had four generations of family live here. You know, they don't think the, there's been a good job so far, but it we think the town that can can be turned around. So um, there's also at the bottom of, you know, s- this uh, next slide of looking at upgrade digital infrastructure. And so forth. Um, then there's, you know, of course, the negative comments, stop taxing businesses into closing down, you know. Um, could a real estate tax take away burden from restaurants, for instance? That that would be one possible counter to that, that comment. Um. Tourism is also here, uh, strategic growth, so and so forth. Again, you can see the full range of comments when I I email around the the PDF. But just to go back to that, uh, significant consideration, do we think the sampling size of a hundred and three surveys with. Around twenty-three, twenty-four responses for town residents is is enough.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, well, and that's what I was about to say. If you look at it in relation to the population of the town, that's over twenty percent, so.
Well, yeah.
I mean, twenty percent participation is not bad, but but this is only the digital version. If we roll out the paper version, I think we'll see that go up a lot.
So at at the workshop on Saturday, uh, there was mentioned from some stakeholders about why not doing a name or. Of the paper survey to housing. So Javier and I actually went to the post office today, this morning and uh. We talked to the post office, they gave us some advice. There's a pretty great USPS tool online. You can select your mailroom and see how much it costs to send it to every address in the mailroom. Problem is the mailrooms in Scottsville kind of, uh, I guess we could say fan out from the. From the town. So we would not only be paying for uh, folks in town, some some roads, but also out of town.
But that's okay. I mean, I think that's how we should be looking at it anyways. It's those surrounding areas as well.
So, so um, that that is one possibility. Another possibility that we are talking today about. You know, if uh, we scatter around the surveys, twenty, twenty surveys per person, thirty surveys per person, you. Uh, wanted to take it to your neighbors, that would be another opportunity. There is a drop box that's not being used right now downstairs. We put a little sign on and say, put your surveys in here. People can drop them off whenever they if they're comfortable.
Do we have little postcards or something with the QR codes? Cause I can just, I, you know, soccer's starting on Saturday and there are hundreds of people down there.
Saturday, there should be little table tents.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not sure where I'm only. I'm not sure exactly where I'm only took the, the survey, if if there was, those went to the.
We dropped one there, but you're talking about something different.
Yeah, or like.
Setting aside on your.
Yeah.
Cause you're not thinking intended with anything. So this is the perfect tent size, actually, this thing on the right for. Exactly, so we can uh, print out more of those, but table tents, um. And then the paper co- copy of the survey, we can amend, uh, you know, change the date, set an end date for. Two weeks from now or so, uh, so it's just a question of whether uh. Plan Commission wants to continue with the online survey and the paper survey? Okay, so.
I was thinking about um, scan during the poll or just one year had um, a. Laptop or some sort of digital input uh, out at the market.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm just curious as to how that might help people if we're, you know. Um, talking to people and we're asking them to do the survey and it'll just take five minutes, you know, that kind of thing. We might be able to take care of a couple of people who, you know, don't wanna take it home or whatever it is, so.
Well, I walked over to the library a couple of days ago and they have had surveys sitting on their countertop in front of where you check out the books. And they mentioned to me the ladies that they've been, you know, handing them out, but I think, you know, that's, that's the difference, you know, passively handing them out versus. Actively having an engaged conversation about a health plan. And it's standing there until the person fills out a survey. So I think a lot of people will take it home. They think it's interesting, but then you know, they lay in their. On the countertop or junk drawer.
That's what I was gonna say. You're really with the paper survey. You are beholden to them actually like going to their mailbox or putting it back or driving down here.
Yeah, and we do know that there is a population that does not have as much savvy with the electronic. Which type, you know, so yes, it's good to talk.
Right.
I just was offering that as a suggestion as an additional step, that you might be able to get some. You know, digital people who will may not follow up.
And on the paper-based survey, we also have the QR code on there. People realize that, hey, it's QR codes easier than me delivering it.
Right.
Later.
That's. The limited time and, cause it's like weighing two different things. It's like accessibility of that paper survey and then targeting. Members that are in on those mail routes would get a good cross-section of who either lives, works. Or spends time in Scottsville.
Yeah.
Or around it, um.
Well, I agree about the soccer.
Yeah, and we should have somebody down at the farmer market every Saturday, work in the crowd. You know, we could, we could take shift. I, you know, we just, we're really missing a large.
So we've got our materials ready. I'll I'll give an overview of that in a few minutes. We've got tablecloth with the te- the town logo on it. We've got. Those phone cores, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, so that that could uh, plug that gap and we can get more responses. So. I'll ask a question now that might not have a specific answer, but what would be the number of town response that the planning commission would be comfortable with? Uh, I'll mention that the twenty eighteen or nineteen survey had a hundred and thirty-nine respondents, I I believe. Yeah, and then the other one had a hundred and nineteen respondents. So we're, we're getting close to that number two.
Right.
We're quite close.
I think percentage wise, twenty percent is pretty dang good for a survey. Like it it just is. I mean, it's a small number of people, but.
I just wanna, I I just wanted to, we have a cross-section.
I want more, more respondents too, but I'm saying if we had to stop it right now, that is a good return rate. I want more more respondents too, but I'm saying if we had to stop it right now, that is a good return rate. But I do want to keep it going. I want to get more people to respond.
When we're talking about mail routes. So if we were to say, okay, we want you to deliver along this particular route, which has, let's say, a hundred houses. But only fifty of those houses are in town limits. Could we like just give them fifty. Surveys they deliver to the first fifty houses, do they still charge for the entire route or per copy that you're distributing along that route?
We got a suggestion after we've looked at it to start talking to the postmaster and see if there's some. Granularity to. I don't have an answer now, but we're curious about it. So we'll keep poking at it. One thought about that mailers, trying to figure out how the paper survey would address both those in and outside of town. So I think Lincoln's gonna pull up the trip, the routes to give you a little bit of perspective on it.
So these are the mail routes within the Scottsville zip code. So. If. You select, let's say, the downtown, which also goes significantly in Buckingham. You have six hundred, let's see. Sorry, I have to move it. Six hundred business and residential, six hundred sixty-one right there.
Down into Buckingham, so.
Yeah.
And then you'll have a portion, like if you switch one of them, you miss some of the north side of town. So the immediate routes aren't perfect unless you're, you know, trying to do an ad for your business.
So this will be more of a hardware street, you know. Route northward, for instance, that's six hundred three residences, nine nine businesses, for instance. Yeah, so you can see the approximate cost of that, northeast would be a hundred point one dollars plus the top of the sprinting. And that would be a ton of. What was it? Something be quite, quite a lot of mailers. When we're saying mailers, are we talking about an entirety of a survey or just like a piece of part of stuff? With a QR code that says, hey, your survey is available victory all downtown. Yeah, so basically there's some weight limitations, so we have to make sure, like. Postcard, no problem, right? But if we send out the that hard copy, we have to make sure that it's within the weight and size, of course. That's that a lot of paper and almost of those probably get it through, yeah.
Right, it's not double sided though, so.
Yeah, so.
I think part of it is a. Weight and what we want with our costs, with our time. With our accessibility and then seeing what option. Planning Commission with staff feels comfortable about. I think we've kind of floated all of them and I think all of those are pretty valid, thinking it back and forth. So just some direction I think would help us.
And on on Saturday, we had some conversations with a town counselor and he was mentioning that. The town used to do the newsletter with the trash service, I guess. He was very supportive of. Of sending out a newsletter with a survey. So. There is support, it's just what's feasible, like sending out surveys all the way up here to where that new campground is. Might not be the most difficult thing. We can talk to the the postmaster to try to target just Scottsville. Maybe they have a, you know, something in their computer system that says just inside a boundary based on census data or something. That would be, I think, worthwhile. Also targeting soccer families would be very worthwhile and easy. And then we'll do more of these QR code table tents at the tavern and. We'll have them in our go bag. So if you go to a soccer or other events, you can just hand out the QR codes. And if you see someone that might not be familiar with QR codes, we'll also include some paper surveys. We'll try to do. Double sided on there to save some paper. Would that sound? Good? Yeah, in my head, like you have your table tents, veins. Tavern, an Ami cheese at the brewery, anywhere where somebody is sitting captive for more than like ten minutes. And then also add like five or six paper copies there, refresh like once a week or something for people who don't want to. And then we just pick out which one everyone's returned in at that location once. Yeah, so. So the the advertisement that you have, just pull this down now. If something that was sized like quarter page, yeah, quarter page, so. That actually works quite well, like table on either side, yeah. So we'll try to find some card stock and do that. Okay, this is, this is really a big, very useful.
Are we going this route and not the mail route? Where where do we stand with the mail idea? Do we like it or no? It's funny.
I think it's probably less.
Perfect, I just wanted to. All right, so we'll do the table tents. We're gonna get out and start working bigger events like the farmer's market, just talking to people and and walking the QR code around.
More works, yeah, even just a little tablet.
Yeah.
So create a much more interactive.
Plus, it it extends the. In the range, right?
So I have a. Idea we had also today. There's a possibility of addressing some of the mailer responses through some time spent with sneakers on and canvassing. Your local town, if you have five members, five hundred and fifty, say it's maybe a hundred and fourteen houses, a hundred and fifty, whatever it is. You divide that by five, you can do that in a weekend between five people. That is another possibility. You you set out a little turf for each person. And they just walk out and if they reach somebody, you immediately hand them the survey and talk to them for three minutes and then move forward. Or you stick something in that little space in between the door and the frame. That's another possibility. If you want to coordinate, it can be done in a weekend, probably between. Four or five people and it's just the printing.
I was, yeah. I was thinking maybe like, yeah, in the downtown area. I don't know if I would be.
I've walked around before, I.
Yeah.
You'll be all right. I have some training I could also teach you from my last few jobs.
Okay.
If I can make it around, you can do all right.
All right, yeah, I would I would be willing to do that if I could take the whole little downtown area. I mean, I'm not, well, I mean, I'm already walking around all of the time anyway, so.
If it's good exercise.
Yes.
If I cut a map with a total and just share that amongst you and you sign up for some schedule some weekend.
Yeah.
And then it's, most of it is usually with that, it's probably. You get about twenty percent of people and eighty percent of it is just putting a little. Putting a paper copy. We would save on the mailing. We would only do the printing. And you might get some engagement, a quick, hey, please send this back and drop it off at Dropbox.
Right.
But you'll you'll still have the same apathy sometimes. Apathy isn't fair. People are really busy.
Right, right.
I think that's a majority of people. That's one suggestion I have. It depends on how willing you guys feel about that. But let us know. We we have multiple options we thought about. We're getting a little bit more engagement.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, all right. I got three.
All right.
Okay. Moving on to recapping the recent workshops. On August fifteenth, we have the retaining character workshop. This is a Tuesday evening workshop. We had seven attendees, two planning commissioners and two town counselors. And. You can see on the right-hand side of the slide that we had a scribe. Kelly was our scribe. She took wonderful notes and. You know, there's a lot of information discussed. I also took notes in my notepad and one of the challenges of an event like this is really convincing all this. Great information. Okay, so this is something that we're gonna have to do. And I mean, just the high-level takeaways was, you know, the principle of retaining character. Attendees really thought about, you know. The phrase maybe lifestyle and historic downtown aesthetic might be better, okay? So I will have to mention that sometimes you're you're so excited to be at a workshop. And it's it's kind of like, could be interpreted as a group thing, you know, this could happen at any workshop. You get excited about idea and then, you know, you want to switch to something, okay? So then also, like, for instance, go to enabling housing choices. Attendees thought making Scottsville. A home was a better title. So the the discussion really focused on assets and relationships, okay? So of course, when we had multiple workshops, and I'll get to the the next workshop where attendees really like to talk about. Character and housing actually a lot. You know, I think the planning commission will have to take input from multiple events and say, well, this. Group of stakeholders said this, this group of stakeholders said this, which one do we want to really focus on? And we were talking on Saturday after the workshop that, you know, perhaps. You know, it's not as much about the titles of the words or the headlines, but it's also about. One or two or three paragraphs below that in the comp plan that really explains what those. Two or three words in that phrase mean, do you know what I mean? So it's a combination. You've got to get the right headline phrase on the goals and principles. We we also have to get the right. Two or three paragraphs below that to explain what character means or lifestyle, so on so forth. Yeah, so I think it's it's a, you know, a process we'll have to go through for each workshop that we have. So then we had the next workshop on September second, it seems weeks away, previous, but it was just a few days ago. But that was a Saturday morning workshop and we changed the date and time instead of having a day at night to get a different. Type of stakeholder and yeah, eleven people came, one planning commissioner and two town counselors. Town counselors were Mr. Heisen and Mayor was able to come about half the time. And. Basically, the only other attendee that I think besides Mayor that attended both was Nancy Gill. So it was it was a very different makeup of stakeholders, which I think was really good also. So basically, we started off with my typical slides that I showed at the last workshop. And we really recapped what was talked about at the character workshop very briefly. But the the participants got so excited, maybe because it was a Saturday starting long weekend, they really wanted to talk about character. And, you know, someone, for instance, was talking about lifestyle that. And then, you know. Someone also looked up small town character on the internet and said, well, gee, is it really what small town character we're looking for? So, you know, there's, I guess we could say, very input from different workshops, right? So I don't stress, fill in more if I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Sharing only a sliver of this, but yeah, I think we're gonna have to sit back after several of these workshops and look at the bigger picture. And pick a phrase that kind of represents most people's views. We're not gonna find the perfect phrase, yeah. So continuing on before we link the roots, I think one.
One thing I found to find interesting that I think I would want to engage in the future meetings are, we had Josh Peck from the ARB. And I think there's aspects of that that if we're trying to have more collaboration, more consensus. And more communication between all bodies. He had some good points when we were talking about topics here, but I think would apply later, so I I made the proactive. Include him in probably our next aspect of these, because he had just good points that.
And he's got a good historical perspective on, you know, he he was town council, he was on the planning commission, you know, he's been on the ARB. So he grew up here, so he he did have a lot of. Historical knowledge to bring to the table and the discussion also.
Yeah, so we didn't have anyone from the ARB at the first workshop, so Mr. Peck gave some great insights at the second workshop. So. Basically, you know, Mr. Peck especially was talking about, you know, housing. You know, making Scottville a home is very inviting, but. He was really, obviously, even housing choices, and that's really aligning with our standard result. People want a broad range of housing to select.
Well, and that's really the point of the comprehensive plan is to, you know, making Scottville a home sounds great. But we can't do that unless we have some housing stock. And we we have a very. Big lack of housing choices in this town, whether for rent or to purchase. New or old, just in general.
And making Scottville home, that's more of like a fuzzy feeling than a.
Right, like, look, here's the plan, here's the problem, and here's the.
This is a, this is what we're trying to do in summer.
Right.
Yes, I think it has more more than just, you know, housing options. It's also about. Making it work for everyone who lives here, making sure that we're, you know, stewards of the land and making sure that we're. Shopping at our local businesses and participating in things, so really making it something where, you know, we're really truly living in it.
Maybe it could be more of a a goal that, you know, that with the weaving, that like this is. Making Scottville a home is a goal.
Much broader or overarching, it contributed to by a lot of more incisive steps than we initially.
So that would be that explanation right below that.
Right.
Pull the points and say.
Here's how we're gonna do that. Yeah. You know, more local options for businesses and restaurants.
But then they go just as. So also mentioned that the conversation on Saturday that was focusing on fostering stewardship. I think in my mind was originally targeted more towards the natural environment. But we got talking about assets and I pulled up a slide from the strategic plan for the for the town. Talking about the town's assets and the conversation included, yes, a lot of, you know, environment and green spaces. You know, streams, so on so forth, but they really wanted to be a steward for a lot of different town assets, so that that was really interesting. And there were several attendees that, you know, gave their opinions that previous campaigns have not been successful and really. Advocated for a new approach. And this, from my personal view, was very surprising and. You know, I I thought it was refreshing to some attendees. Would that be a good summary, I guess? It reinforces the work we're doing also.
Okay.
Yeah. So rather than just taking the existing comp plan as a word document and words looking a little more. I I think what we're doing now is taking a step back and trying to look at a different approach to these goals, strategies and so on.
Lincoln, just a just a question for you would be. When you mentioned that these. Respondents mentioned a new approach different than others in the past, can you clarify what they meant or is that just a generic comment?
Well, you know, again, I don't want to say too many names because this was a, you know, sharing session, but I I will just say that. You know, basically, there was a gesture to a a younger attendee, I would say just a few years out of college, maybe. And this younger attendee is looking to invest in the town, I guess, a business or something and. You know, there was a question, this young attendee, what do you want from the town to be able to reassure you in your investment, to invest more, you want younger people to come to town? And I don't think that attendee specifically gave an answer to my memory, but you're just trying to rethink the process of town doing business. And doing its planning. And I think there weren't exact examples given, but it was kind of an overarching.
Yeah, I I would I would say that they just. The major, well, I don't know the majority, but the people who were sharing this opinion. Didn't see any real progress from comp plan to comp plan, you know, when we lay out that we want moderate growth. And we have a number of a thousand residents. You know, what strides are we making towards those goals? And it didn't seem in in. Other people's opinions that we were making much progress, if any, towards meeting those goals and not not, that was just an example, but. For for everything that we have laid out in the comp plan, like.
No, that's that's helpful. One of the things I have. Mentioned before and I will mention more in the future is once you have. Plans that are. You know, well thought out, put together, we've finished the comp plan, you know, the strategic plan. But then it takes the action, it takes drivers, it takes the council, it takes planning commission, it takes a number of people, and I. But then it takes the action, it takes drivers, it takes the council, it takes planning commission, it takes a number of people, and I think maybe one of the things to keep in mind is, as we move forward with this process, that we have a nice piece of paper is great, that we've gotten people's opinions is really helpful. Then the process of acting on it is even more demanding. In other words, to really make something happen means we use it then, and we can talk about that later. Our our job first is to write the paper, so to speak, you know, to come up with the the research, get people's opinions, do the best job we can do to get a wide of input, and that's what's happening. The second part of it, and I'm happy to dialogue in the coming months or next year, and other town councillors, because then it comes up, it's really now then to go after parts of this and really move it forward. Now it's do we really drive issue A or issue B or parts of it or and some of it really breaks down to people on the council. Wanna do and and at at any rate, long and short of, both to get all this research and input as we think about where we are in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. But then also to do the best job we can serving the people of Scottsville to figure out what can we do as a consensus to move parts of it forward. So anyways, excited about that in the future.
What Dan is saying is very similar to what we heard that Saturday, which I think is, I like that idea.
Yeah.
That there's a realistic, hey, we're ju- we're kinda just starting, and that feels like it's a the town of Scottsville together is trying to look at its future, which is the idea of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I do think it's important to for, you know, once we have this plan put together, we we've heard from the town that, you know, and I I know this is, it seems pie in the sky, but I feel like people need to set their own personal preferences aside. And, you know, if we lay out a plan based on feedback that we've gotten from the town, then we are moving forward on this plan regardless of how you feel about housing or businesses or taxes, or, you know, if this is what we say the plan is, and we're we're coming to a consensus on this plan, then let's move forward and and make some real progress.
Yes, because a plan can't be specifically for everyone and everyone wants, um so it has to kind of find that middle ground, that not pleasing every single person, but, you know, pleasing the majority, in my opinion. Because if you, for instance, take the existing comp plan and wordsmith it to death, make a lot of people happy, but it doesn't really mean anything. What you, the document you approve, and this type hypothetically hypothetically is talking, but uh that's why we had to be, might have been very strategic about the final document.
Right.
And how it suits the stakeholders. I'll just mention another implementation example that was mentioned on Saturday, uh someone was talking about uh the ABC licenses, we have sixteen, right? Uh, this person, you know, said, why not hire a manage managing event management company to implement those sixteen licenses? Uh, not having to go, the staff going, you know, and contracting individual events. So that could be a quick win that this person mentioned, and there the event management experts, this this company that the town would engage with, of course. Uh, that would be one example of implementation that was mentioned at the event, cuz the other example, uh, I mean, Rhythm on the River was one example that used to happen here, but no longer, I guess, because COVID. That was one type of event that was held. Uh, the other uh really good point I heard on Saturday was about a thousand uh person targets, the town population that's in the existing comp plan. This, another person mentioned that basically uh thousand people, is it really a population the target that the town should have, or is it a number of houses that the town should have a target for? And that brought up an interesting question, how many houses are in the town? So I think Government Services Committee and and others might be looking into that, just so we have an an inventory. And then from that inventory, if we know that there's a hundred and thirty-six houses, for instance, we work back from the population number that we think is in town, and we can find the the average number of households. That thing is useful.
Well, you know, we on, as a planning commission, have been asking for an inventory of especially like the main, main street and valley street here. What businesses and what residents, you know, what what are zoned as businesses, what's zoned as residential, what's zoned as, you know, mixed use? And of those properties, which ones are vacant? And and how, you know, and I think having an inventory of those properties will help us start to target how we're going to get those properties filled. If, you know, if we can, I know it's not, we're not gonna a hundred percent have every property filled. But I think it will help us start to come up with creative ways that we can incentivize owners to fill the properties.
Uh, a few other observations of this highlight, uh third from bottom on the slide workshop, this is recommended. And I think we've been hearing that a few times, engaging with businesses, so uh I think staff, now we're recommending having our a workshop with local businesses, because A, they're the the main supporters of meals tax, right? And B, it's really important to downtown hearing from them. And maybe, maybe not just business owners, but also uh building owners, for instance, that have commercial space that couldn't throw it out, so.
Right.
So um, we understand that, you know, mayor was gonna come or to tonight, it it'll come later.
He might not have been able to attend.
We we are thinking that he might be uh the the great link to the uh, you know, business uh community, so uh uh that could be a future workshop, I showed that on realistic workshops.
Are aren't you in in um communication with the chain of commerce?
I have been, um, and I've also talked to a lot of um business owners over the months, not in any kind of official capacity, just sharing a lot of you know, you know, not feeling like they have always that, and that's why I was advocating for um, for there to be some sort of business link to uh town council, what's going on and getting them involved in shaping what's happening going forward. So I'm glad to see that um that it's been, you know, recommended that we have a workshop with them as well, because I think that, you know, there's a lot of good ideas, there's just a lot of disappointment and you you know, that kind of thing can really bog down progress, so.
Right.
But yeah. Been talking to Debbie.
Yeah.
Uh, just informally, and um, you know, it's good, talking is good.
Right, yeah, I'm just wondering if we can start reaching out to the her and to, you know, local businesses, so.
Absolutely, and if I can help with that, I can.
Yeah, so, I mean, at these workshops, we usually have two planning commissioners and two town councillors, so if you'd like to be one of the planning commissioners, that'd be really great.
Yeah, um. Let me just ask this, I I I think I'm hesitant to do it because I should probably know the answer, but these sessions, are they with people that you've invited to the sessions, or is it open to whoever wants to come to the session?
Well, first of all, it's open to whoever, the the challenge has been getting the word out.
Yeah, well, I just noticed on your new site that it's not on the calendar.
Yeah, so so moving forward, um, we have a better understanding of what these sessions really are. And then the the website's up and running now, so we'll be able to outreach better. Um, we also have been planning uh about these focus groups being a little bit larger events and the workshops being a little bit uh smaller to have more openly a conversation. I think we have two to three tables here in the middle, and the people kind of sit around. And there's a few people that like to sit at the far edge, but then they chime in too, right? So it's a little interesting group dynamic, but people just kind of, I I felt that the two events have been kind of cozy, right? If we have thirty people here, it's a different dynamic, of course, but we of of course don't wanna exclude anyone, so what so far we've asked is, we've started with a this, a group of about eight, you know, not everyone showed up, and then we had said, hey, if you can't come, tell someone and also bring a friend, you know what I mean? So it's something like that, and I think that's welcoming, but yes, we can do a better job of making it more inclusive, I think, yeah.
I think for the business one, though, we should make it just the business owners.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so definitely the uh focus groups for housing and walkability, those those we will definitely have to focus on getting the word out. And uh, I mean, I'll defer to Javier if we would do advertisement or uh so and so forth, yeah. So um, that was a great segue to double check on what stakeholders we have in these so far, and which ones we really want to focus on. So engaged, we've focused on so far a lot of individuals. Scan, uh Princess Stevie came uh last weekend, and we also invited her to the V-Dot discussion, she she wasn't able to join that at the last minute, but uh Javier and I met up with uh Tiger Fuel this morning. Um, and had had a conversation where where we we all learned a lot. Uh, institutions, we we already consulted a lot of different institutions. Um, including, you know, planning commission here, town council, these are the most important to you, then, uh, you know, for instance, library, Almoral Supervisor Donna Price, uh, Ms. Gill and I had a conversation, again, we all learned a lot, shared uh views, um. The Almoral Planning was this morning, Almoral Broadband was about two, three weeks ago. Levanna Planning, Thomas Jefferson, V-Dots, uh, and then Virginia Housing, we'll give an update on that recent conversation. So there might be a few more, but these are the high level ones, and then on the to do, uh, we of course need to still engage more individuals. We engage those businesses and also organizations, local churches, uh soccer groups so and so forth, so that'll be more of the, you know, grand and gold packet. Are there any specific organizations that you'd like us to jot down right now? Church groups or uh?
You do the Methodist Church, my neighbor's the pastor, so I can chat with her.
And uh, you know, we have also engaged the James Exchange, I don't have them here on this list, but um, in Scottville Monthly for instance, as the news organizations. Uh, and you know, Nancy Gill is also involved here, that's a helpful, dedicated group.
I do think we need to do um the Boys and Girls Club and um the Yanty Community Center, I'm just not sure what um, what that engagement looks like. Inviting representatives to come to our our meetings, um.
Well, Boys and Girls Club closes at six fifteen, and they're about six thirty, yeah, so the director is probably heading out by the time we have our meetings.
Right.
Um, yeah, so yeah, I I'm just not so sure, we we might, I I mean, we could just could email him, uh, Miss Strassner.
Yeah.
I could copy you and get a feel for how how we could just ask him, what's the best option, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Did, did you mention Southern?
Southern, so Javier and I are having a conversation uh with them uh next Tuesday, yeah. We just scheduled that, and uh it'll be very much like how we had a conversation with uh Tiger Fuel, that's the plan is learning uh information and you know, sharing, sharing information uh about the comp plan process. Yeah.
And so some of it might be broaching a small group, or at the very least for us, there's some perspective we get on what the process looks from that kind of stakeholder, but to be with public engagement. We'll see, I I think it's finding the right venue for them to participate.
Right.
Uh, willingly willingly in and in a productive way, for us, so.
Okay, so Boys and Girls Club, uh, I will, I will just draft an email uh next day or two, uh, copy and stress me, we'll focus on that. Uh, and I'll show this slide, you know, we currently just to make sure we're not having any of that, so of course, we'll keep adding this list. So in terms of next events, this is, uh, you know, they've talked in a conversation we had with uh Ms. Caltabiano on uh Saturday midday after the workshop uh via Zoom, so we've already had uh two workshops for teen and character fostering stewardship. Uh, the next workshop would be enabling growth, and uh at the discussion we throughout the the day, Saturday, September thirtieth. Uh, this might seem a little far off, but we've got some other things kind of happening between now and then, uh, just like I mentioned. Uh, Javier and I met with Virginia Housing or Housing Virginia. And they're willing to come back to have a conversation with uh two planning commissioners and two town councillors, this is what we proposed. Uh, and maybe some piece of gorgeous in that discussion. Uh, so this we think we should have quite soon, because it would inform our larger focus group on housing with the broader community. If we learn some strategies from uh Housing Virginia that uh could be, you know, you know, tested with the focus group, for instance. Uh, then we have the Walkability uh focus group, uh, and then uh we were discussing with uh Ms. Calabiano about the need for probably a community meeting. So the purpose of a community meeting, it would not be a formal hearing that we would do a little bit later, based on the requirements of Virginia Code, the community meeting would be kind of like a capstone event. Kind of culminating all of these different types of outreach that we've had so far. And I could see this community event maybe here uh at the uh town council chambers. Um, and you know, different planning commissioners or town councils would give a brief update on different aspects, so someone might give a brief, you know, certainly results, another person might uh share about one workshop they attended, another person might share about another workshop. And this would be kind of like, you know, an overview in case some people weren't able to attend everything, and I don't think anyone will be able to attend everything, except maybe a core group of us, of course. And this would be one additional way to let people know that we are here to hear you, you know what I mean? So and and for them to hear the overview, the big picture. What 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 would be your feedback based on that? That that would be something in early November. But uh, Ms. Calabiano, would you like to explain anything further on on that?
Yeah, I mean, I I guess my point was that we're having smaller focus groups because we know that we can really have a conversation if we have a smaller focus group, but we're running the risk of excluding people, so a community meeting before the public hearing allows allows us to get more people involved in what we're doing, so we we could educate them on what we've done so far, the type of some engagements we've done and kind of how we got to where we are and get some feedback from them also. Before we actually formalize it and get all the text written up, after we get the text written up, we have to have a public hearing to say, hey, this is what we put together, what do you think? And and there's going to be more edits after that, but wouldn't it be nice to get some of that feedback before we actually put the text in writing? So I don't know, I mean, do you guys think that that makes sense? I think the the more engagement, the better. Um, I don't know, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree. Yeah, I like it.
And I I think it would be very possible to hear from a broad range of town councillors and planning commissioners at the meeting. Not just one or two people speaking, you would really show a unified approach to the ideas. Of course, there would be mentioned that may maybe not everyone agrees on something, but this is for the greater good of the town, for instance, we could phrase that a certain way, but maybe that's an idea. Okay, so we will, we will plan on early November, if that's what we're hearing.
Hmm.
Um, and yes, Ms. Calabiano is is uh really right that we need to kind of gather this last information before we write those uh principles and goals, finalize the principles and goals. Um, maybe at this event, we might have bullet points, and then from that last feedback, we might write into the formal paragraphs. But also meanwhile, we we can start chipping away at different aspects of writing the comp plan or updating the text, uh, for instance, on our box stores, which I'll mention in a few minutes. Okay. Yeah, so is it possible we could drill down to some dates on on this slide, slide number thirty-seven? Um.
So the, yeah, cuz the most important thing is coming out of this meeting, being able to for a good period of time, being able to communicate with everybody, what these upcoming events look like, so. Like you said, nailing down those dates would help us
Okay.
Start working on that, so we feel engaged, so the, so we feel good about that September meeting, the thirtieth, Saturday. Uh, does anybody? We could even start with two town councillors. We could even start with two town councillors who, who might want to participate for enabling growth. We've had.
I have it on my calendar to be there.
Perfect. And then we could get a second one, maybe somebody who hasn't been able to attend before. But.
So Saturday, September thirty, I, I think attendees did mention they, they do like Saturday mornings. I think we did ten thirty with our.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else from planning mission would be interested?
I have a town that weekend.
Okay.
So enabling growth is. Not just housing, but it's.
For development and as we learned on Saturday, people will also want to consider revitalization or even filling in shop as a form of growth. And one aspect of that is not talking about growth generally, of course, but talking about potential different zones of the, of the town. For instance, people might be turned off of the general idea of growth, but when you start talking about the northeast part of town where there's a lot of lands that might be developed. Maybe they're okay with that, about growth in the southwest part of town, this would be the type. So once we start breaking down that question of where, where would you like to see growth, maybe then we could find some very interesting answers.
Matthew, do you, do you have the capacity to do that, Matthew? If not, I'll volunteer for it.
He stepped out for a moment.
Okay. Well, let's get back to you then about the second person. I could be like a backup if Matthew can't do it, or I could just volunteer for it.
Okay, I think having three people. And nailing down two works because life happens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Then I suggest we look at Housing Virginia next and we go back to business community. Housing Virginia. Ms. Councilor Heinz would like to attend. She's very excited about that. But housing. We understand that some housing stakeholders might want to attend, for instance. Tiger Fuel is very interested in understanding some staple reviews. So Gordon has, has volunteered to, to join that conversation. And we might, we might have others, really, planning commissioners excited to talk about housing. So this conversation with Virginia Housing would. Focus on strategies that they've seen around the area that have worked in Virginia. Case studies, I think one example was a Danville case study on the river that might seem relevant to Scottsville. You're familiar with that.
Yeah, they, they used to start tax credits, pay old buildings before. They have, they have warehouses, old tobacco warehouses in the same way. That might be, don't know. That's an alteration.
Virginia Housing also mentioned about their grant program and they have an interesting. Aspect of the grant program that focuses on supporting communities to rewrite portions of their zoning code to promote more housing. So they've oddly never had a community get the zoning grant before. I guess it's relatively new. But if the town of Scottsville is interested in leveraging that, if you mentioned twenty thousand dollars or something to rewrite. A portion of the grant, whether it be on, you know, temporary lodging, so on and so forth, that, that could be a real win for the community. So we've learned more about that at that conversation.
And then the reason we're thinking of mid-September is that we're hoping that that meeting is informative for that September thirtieth. Because that growth aspect will probably be one of those. So.
Do you want the same people to attend both conversations or no?
Some of it is for us, some of it is made for the stakeholders. We'll probably have high to ten of those. Just for the things, we could do the same if that feels comfortable. Would that kind of make some of the scheduling easier also for us? Would, what does your availability during that September look like in general? Big no-nos.
No, I'm glad to participate. I, I can't imagine that I have anything too pressing, but you're talking mid-September Saturday.
Ms. Heinz was thinking about weekday night and also Virginia Housing folks would probably prefer weekday night because they're driving from Richmond.
Oh.
They're on their quasi government time.
Yeah. So I'm gonna maybe propose Tuesday, the nineteenth of September as one option. I don't know if that's.
I'm open that night.
Possibility. Okay.
So yeah, I, I would like to participate in that, but I don't need to, you know, I don't want to be hogging up all the sessions. So that's why I'm still in favor of Matthew attending on Saturday, the thirtieth, if he can.
And then we could look at you for also that Virginia Housing meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at the nineteenth Tuesday, Saturday.
Yeah, that's fine. Can we do something closer to like five so they can have? You know, a safer drive back to Richmond?
So, so I think Ms. Heinz is available for five thirty onwards or something. So we could do that. So something, something.
Six, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm sure well, that would work. Well, I think it's a, would you be able to get back?
Okay. Finally. Okay, so I'll, I'll. I'll share around some, some, some dates. For that also, okay. Then. Going back to business community.
I would like to do that one.
I would too.
Saturdays. Um, will be top, I mean, maybe eight, ten thirty, but I will have soccer games. Eight thirty and nine thirty and they go an hour, so.
We're thinking that would be, I know everybody has every which way scheduled, but for businesses. I think we just throw one in and see who's available for that.
Okay.
Mondays.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah, just some, some time where they're not running their businesses.
Yeah, that's true. On a Saturday, the thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point. Mondays. Like the best for business community.
Both of you could still do Mondays as planning commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, let me check my. That's the. That's kind of our question about where to fit it in, between this month and next month. We didn't really nail down last Saturday about it. We wanted to have a conversation with you guys also about. Looking at holistically what our community engagement looks like and where you think that might fit in best. It was clear to us where Virginia Housing would fit.
Right. I, I mean, I could do this month, a Monday this month.
With the Vincent's community, it might be a good idea to maybe approach the chamber to see if they want to help coordinate and. Um, pull that together, but I can imagine that they can do that super quick.
Right, yeah.
It might be better to have it longer term.
I think that's reasonable, just to be asking so quick. I don't think you can, yeah.
Yeah.
So my, like, one option is Monday, October second. I, I do know that's a planning commission meeting. So we could have the conversation start earlier in the day, like five thirty or something.
Yeah.
Do it for an hour and a half and then take a short, you know, coffee break and do planning commission stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to that.
Okay, so.
We have Strasser and John.
That's. Ten two.
Ten to five thirty, hour and a half. Yeah, five, five thirty could work there. And then I think who, who's available, we could, those who might not be able to attend. You might pull one or two of them and we could probably engage them in the growth seminar the week before.
Okay.
Um, and I've been watching the length of our, our workshops. I think people are very focused up to about an hour and a half.
Then that last fifteen or thirty minutes, people start to drop off. The, the gung ho people are still talking, but. You know, people start to leave. So I think hour and a half or a little bit. Business community.
I feel like that about planning commission meetings.
Okay, then, um, the focus groups, walkability and then housing. I mean, the, the order doesn't really matter, but I think walkability is an easy product freezer. And housing focus group will be a tough one. So I would suggest we do walkability first to kind of learn how to walk with this. So these focus groups with Saturdays be good, I think?
I think it tends to be better for a lot of people.
Okay.
Except for sports, sorry.
So like Saturday, October seventh, for instance, would be. I think a good, a good Saturday. Is one option.
Oh, yeah, not me on the way that weekend.
Or the, or the fourteen. Yeah, or the twenty first.
Did we exhaust our September options?
Uh, let's see. Business community on October second, enabling growth on September thirtieth. Virginia Housing on September nineteenth. I think pretty, pretty exhausting because these will take time to prepare.
I think that's the most labor.
Yeah.
So it's the.
This focus groups. So what, what I would suggest for the focus groups. Since we already have a planning commission meeting in early October and we also have that chamber meeting. I would suggest for the focus group, we, we focus on October fourteenth and October twenty first, those Saturdays. That will give us a little bit of time to ramp up to those because we have to do more homework. A little bit more than a workshop. We have to come up with like a list of questions to be very specific about what we want to find out from the stakeholders. And we have to do good outreach to make sure we invite everyone possible. Everything, fourteenth for walkability. And then twenty first for housing. So that would give us, Housing Virginia would be on September nineteenth. And then the housing conversation with stakeholders and focus groups would be on the following month on the twenty first, so about a month apart. That would give Housing Virginia some time to do any case study research or other things follow up that we might ask of them.
Review that one more time with like months.
Yeah, so let's, let's go chronologically. So Virginia Housing, September nineteen. At six P M. But Angevine, Matt, and then an alternative of Lisa. Then we have chronologically, September thirtieth, enabling growth. Molly, Matt, Lisa, an alternative. That'll be ten thirty A M. So Saturday. And then the next.
I wanted that the reverse. I wanted to do Virginia Housing and be the backup on enabling growth.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Matt, would you be willing to switch? Get a Saturday or Tuesday? All right. Then October second at five thirty would be a business community meeting. Shannon and Molly. And then we are talking about, then we jump into our focus groups, the fourteenth and the twenty first, but we haven't set a time or. We haven't drilled into the.
So it's for both October fourteenth and the twenty first.
That would be walkability and housing.
In the interest of moving things along, because we have quite a lot of agenda left. Can we table nailing down people and times for the two dates in October and maybe do that by email? Can we do that?
Yeah.
Literally with everybody?
Yeah.
I will volunteer for walkability because I'd like to be involved in that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions. And then in the meantime, we can send out. Through email, talking about this ongoing listening events and community events, so.
Okay.
And we could engage with the canvassing and also some items we had from the foldups to postcards and items, soccer.
Right.
Or some of those, so we could divide that up as signups for engagement events with the packet.
Yeah, oh, we, can we do that? I feel like that needs to be done. Can I, can we make that a priority?
So we got on the slide right now. So we've got in our shared folder that I want email and everyone the links all together. But basically we have a signup sheet for these events. We have a talking point sheet that I created, you know, conversation starters, I call it. We have a recording template. I think the recording template is very important because it. It's a sheet you could print off. So when you're talking with someone, you just jot down an idea that they have. And then later after, right after the event, you can jot down other things about, you know. Who, who they were, what, what angle they're coming from, their comments. Because you know, you wait a couple of days, you think you have it in mind, but it starts to fade. And that recording template is really important because we bring that information back together, we discuss, and then we synthesize that into the conflict. So we, you know, take that feedback. And then also in that grab and go toolkit, we have the paper surveys and the tables, tents or QR codes. So there's the table clock, there's the two maps with this, the sticky dots that are there on the table. People will just put on the dot on either panel if they're from the town where, where they're from. Or if they're from the region where they're from. And that's an, an easy engagement tool. Young kids can do it. They can find out where their, their, their home is. Older folks will do it. And what I saw Alamooral County does at their events, they use same approach. They basically number this, the sticky dots. They're quite big dots and they have different colors. Is so you can say, okay, all the dots number, number one will put on, on a certain date. So we can also track, you know, what kind of spread of people we, we saw. Are soccer people mainly coming from the region? And then people at the library and then kind of the town, vice versa. There might be some interesting data there. And then we can also see, we can take this back at our future meetings and say, wow, we're getting a whole lot of people from the region, but we're still missing people from the town. We need to do better outreach in the town. So this is another one of those indicators that we can rely on.
Can I ask, so for these. Posters or are we taking these to events like?
You know, I mean, it depends on what your feel of the event is. So I, I wouldn't want to lug those out to the soccer field.
Right, yeah.
Blowing the wind.
Okay, that's what I was, I mean, I feel like we could have something like this set up at the farmer's market though.
Yeah. So the farmer's market, yeah, I think that'd be really great and people would, you know, walk by when they're circling through the different stalls. And you could have a, a nice conversation about where they're from, how, what is their relationship with the town. So I, I tried to relay on some of the survey questions in the talking point. So that's always a, you know, a way of starting a conversation. What's your relation with Scottsville, Saltwater? And yeah, I think that'd be really useful. And these panels are also very visible. When they see, when they see that, they see the town logo, they see the question at the top, they'll, they'll come up to you and start asking questions too.
We could do something like that for the brewery one night.
That's true.
Like, you ever do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the brewery, we give it twenty percent. So.
We've come up with these great ideas for engagement, but if you should ever make do that, are we putting this down like on a calendar and?
So is that what you mean with the?
Yeah, there's a signup sheet. I think Mr. Johnson's already signed up for a brewery and one other, I remember. I will mail this around again with everything in one email so you can all see it really easily. And then you can just start putting dates. Basically, a signup sheet is something like this. Put another pile of the dates and you can, you can fill in.
I think for the Boys and Girls Club, a great time would be pickup. I think for the Boys and Girls Club, a great time would be pickup. In the evenings from, you know, between five and six thirty, if we had one of those posters in the lobby, um, parents could. When they're coming in to pick up their kids. You know, people might be in a hurry to get going to something else, but you know, we could at least hand out a, a survey or a QR code. If that's okay with them.
Yeah, um, so I'll, I'll mention that in the, the email. Um, okay, so that's grab and go. Uh, I think the only last thing is we need the, the, a bag for the toolkit. Getting something, okay, so much. Okay, so next, uh, time of the content of cortex. As I mentioned, we can already start uh, editing some of these box stories, so uh, for instance, I went through. Canal Basin Square did some, you know, updating based on my knowledge that, uh, that one I know better than others. Victory Hall, Nancy Gill and I were talking, so she said she could update that. Text, uh, so there's already thinking about community center, Doryor Park, so on and so forth. Um, and we could do more box stories on these so-called assets of the town. Just explain a bit, could be one small paragraph about this asset or it could be longer. For instance, uh, Victory Hall is a whole page now, Basin Square is a whole page with a nice photograph, so on and so forth.
So do you just need some, like each of us to pick one of those and that's like our, you know, report?
So what I can do is I can send out an email with this list and you can also add, add to that list, um. And, you know, a lot of this text is good how it is, but there might be sentences within there that are, that are stale.
Okay.
For instance, it says, uh, Victory Hall has a fundraising committee for something. I haven't heard about this fundraising committee, it's still active for instance.
Okay.
Also, another key point that I've done for these box stories. In the text, there's always a lot of recommendations kind of woven in there, but it's very hard to see the forest through the trees, you know what I mean? You have to really read the whole page and then like, oh, I think that's a recommendation. So at the very bottom of every uh, box story, I've made a very clear, uh. Mini section bullet point that says, these are the recommendations for uh, this item. So you can clearly see at the very bottom of every box story, okay, these are the first steps, you don't have to think in your mind, oh, let's recreate the wheel every time. So if someone wants to invest in Victory Hall, these are things that have been considered the last few years and approached already, and this would be a starting point. So I think that's one way of increasing the readability of.
I think we should add the um, pavilion. Perfect. All right, sorry, didn't want to derail, but.
That's a good way to start. Chipping away at all that writing we'll have to do. And then later, it's a little insular.
Yeah.
Each has their little products. Okay, and then I'd also like to talk about reference documents, um, and again, this is all targeted towards us starting to build the, the revised document. Was the end of the year, so we can get this draft ready, um, so we're gonna chip away at it. So uh, previously, there was a conversation uh, at a planning commission meeting where we talked about. Trying to make the document a little shorter, but still having reference documents and pointing reference documents. So of course, uh, the Town Strategic Plan is an important document to reference, whether it's maybe hyperlink from the town websites, it's one, one example. Small area plan, this is a new document since the previous comp plan was completed. Historic district documents, uh, learned since nineteen seventy-six and two thousand and three, um, I mean, this is, these are very important. From the town, these can be linked from the Department of Historic Resources from the state of Virginia. Banquet nature, area master plan, so on and so forth, and then the hu- hotel study that's soon to be completed. Um, so the hotel study, uh, you know, does recommend, uh, the town consider advocating for. Hotel to go two different sites. Um, you know, we understand, you know, land is always changing hands in, in the town, one site may no, no longer be feasible, we understand. Um, and you know, we've gained more information recently that, you know, someone has been looking at doing a hotel somewhere else and. They don't think that Scottsville's really gonna support a hotel chain, be very challenging. But I think the hotel study is a step in one direction. Um, and it does provide information and if things change, this could be a, a great reference stock. And I think it's definitely worth mentioning because it is so-called commercial space that would be considered in the comp plan. Okay, county documents, uh, we definitely need to reference the Alamo County Comp Plan. When we met with the town, the county planners this morning, they, you know, talked about their timeline, we talked about our timeline. And they're very willing to include our comp plan in their comp plan because we're gonna be finished first. So that's great, um, Fluvana County, uh, they are also in process, theirs is gonna finish very soon, I understand, so uh. We will definitely be able to probably uh, include their twenty forty document.
Are, is Alamo County gonna reference Scottsville more in their comp plan?
Um, you know, I have a slide on that and we can talk a little more.
Okay.
We had a candid, candid conversation. Um, so, we'll just keep moving because it's getting late. I also wanted to chip away at the maps for the comp plan, so um, basically. For the maps, we've talked about improving legibility, uh, you know, it's, they're very difficult to see, uh, even on this size of paper, letter-sized paper. Uh, so we might consider doing a eleven by seventeen size or even a fold out if it turns off, but you know, mainly we're gonna focus on a PDF version. In the comp plan right now, there's two zoning maps, one on, on uh, page thirty-six and one on seventy-two. Seventy-two's in the appendix. One question is, do we need two of the same map in the comp plan? Uh, so I think we, we revisit that, uh, moving on. Uh, there is, you know, another uh, map looking at the historic district. So historic district and entrance corridors on that last one. So basically, this, this area here, all the highlight, the now script is very important, this is where you can see the difference between the entrance corridor and the. What it looks like the town boundary, okay, you can see a little bit of gray outside there, right? Okay, so that's important in, in, in the, for the next few slides. This, on the right-hand side is the future land use that the comp plan is projecting, that's a very important document. We also have infrastructure here and uh, daily traffic counts, so I think we can get this from B dot at our future coordination. Uh, this is uh, basically natural areas, so that'd be slopes and streams. This is actually very important, especially for the buy right uh, land up northeast because uh, there has been a lot of feedback that. The town might want to conserve these streams and not, you know, not allow or advocate for not allowing uh. You know, individual houses there. Uh, then public parking, uh, I do have to say from the survey, a lot of concerns were about parking. And. Me parking downtown, you know, just a visitor, I've never really had a trouble finding parking, but, I mean, I'm just trying to understand these comments. Is it harder parking in some side streets sometimes?
Well, any of the parking had to do with Confederate Cemetery, that's a conundrum that will never be solved, but, um. Because there's no parking at the site, and so you have to like go across the street to the, um. Like the bright speed place or, you know, somewhere that's a little bit more public than it is private. It's just private, uh, there, but we have plenty of parking, I feel like. I think there are times though when the parking is paid. And, but I've never ever come down and not been able to find anything like that.
Other than the Fourth of July is that like sometimes days or.
No, you know, I tried to kind of keep in my mind when I thought things were like, whoa, but it was always like. At different times, it's just, I don't think it's very, you know, it's not my clockwork, it's uh. It's random to me in my mind right now.
Working at brewery, I generally start to see a little congestion like Saturdays around like two to fourish. But other than that.
Yeah.
But especially as we're looking towards Scottsville's birth, especially in events, bringing more people into town, it's a consideration.
Well, I think this is where some of these conversations at the brewery or at the. Market might eliminate some of that because we can kind of ask, right, you know, what do you mean? I mean, when you go to the market, it, it can sometimes be really congested there too, but. For the most part, there's a place to be.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I'm hearing that parking is, uh, worth talking more about, um, and especially it doesn't really grow. So uh, it, it seems like we can definitely update the parking plan. Uh, you can see this is also a very small image that hard to read even at this scale, I mean, a piece of paper is hard to read. So we can work on readability.
I'll also mention that at Banquet, but it's been a conversation.
Yeah.
Um, there's no way to park and use the entrance down by Doug's.
Right.
But, um, you know, you can park on the street and then walk it up, but there's no like parking area. And then, um, going up the other way, you're going through dirt roads to get to. I don't know, I'm just for parking lot, I haven't been out there while that, that way.
It's challenging, uh, because of overgrowing.
Yeah.
Branches and stuff.
Yeah, so if we were gonna be serious about, you know, getting more people getting up into Banquet, that might be a consideration or a focus. Sorry, thank you.
Right, well, and there's something like the dog park, it's been mentioned several times that they're talking about putting it in that. Triangle section down by, um, the town and it, I, I don't know. There's no plan on their way, it's just, it's been brought up recently, um, but there's no parking. I mean, you could park along the middle s- street, but if we had an actual dog park there.
You're in the same situations to examples you just gave.
Yes, unless they were willing to open up the parking lot, the lower parking lot, um, that's. You know, got a chain of tents in front of it right now, but I think they opened that for Fourth of July and have noticed that that's been a huge help in alleviating. People trying to park everywhere.
So, yes, the answer to your question is there are some problem spots, but I think as far as central downtown, it's a concern. I want to have more conversation about that, you know, with people who are saying that parking is a problem.
Right.
Okay, so we'll chip away at those maps because those maps, uh, will be time-consuming towards the end of the media update. Um, clarify, um, so I wanted to talk briefly on a related topic to the, the comp plan is really the town boundaries, so I've done a little bit more, uh, research on this. Um, and this is important because it's very, uh, challenging to update the comp plan, uh, if the zoning map is, is not. Uh, showing all areas of town. So I'll just show here the structural zoning map, this is that, that corner here in Fluvana, you can see it has that bend. I, I brought in all the layers that we have on GIS, so you can see here. Uh, Scottsville GIS goes outside the, the stat, Black Line, that's the state of Virginia GIS. And then there's the Fluvana GIS, it's the green line, which is a totally different line. So there, there is some confusion here and, um, Mr. Bowling, the town attorney suggested that we go back to, uh. Previous records, uh, land records to hunt this down, this, this will take time. Yeah, between, between now and, you know, two more months, especially when the town staff, uh, is building capacity. So.
That's interesting, is there, um, a lot of contact along that area between the state of Virginia GIS and Scottsville GIS?
Yeah, but, uh, there just maybe hasn't been a development application in the last ten years in that sliver of land.
Sure.
Uh, the, the, uh, the.
Thinking facets, I'm thinking with all kinds of, of things that could be affected by that. It's not as huge in the area as it kind of looks there, I guess.
Yeah, the three, uh, tourist cabins is here, so this is within the zoning map luckily. But, yeah, it, it did some ambiguity and you know when. Uh, when that, the manager said, oh, that, that green line is just diagrammatic, uh, download the GIS file, so I downloaded the GIS file, it's still diagrammatic. Uh, so for them, yes, that's, uh, uh, they probably appreciate us cleaning up a little bit, yeah. So, um, yeah, and then another way that I kind of discovered is looking at the comp plan document, there's a, there's a difference here in the sort of. It's for the area. Uh, so there's that sliver of land. Then I'll just mention here on the, you know, Fluvana side, here's a summary of what's basically happening. Entrance quarter line, I think, uh, Thomas Jefferson Plan, this is when they were helping the town ten years ago, create the map, they, they selected the wrong line. And, you know, they did not know and there was not a cross-street ten years ago. I was, you know, here, most of us weren't here, right? So these things happen, but I think we just work towards updating with the complans, hopefully approved. Um, the town zoning may approach outside of the town boundary, uh, that is a concern here, you can see that a little sliver. Less than a hundred feet, uh, then, um, Fluvana GIS needs to use accurate town boundary, we just mentioned. And then another question that is raised in my mind, on the next slide, we will talk that. On the Alamo County side, the town boundary was brought to the edge of the river in twenty nineteen. Why was not the same thing done on the, uh, Fluvana side, which is the question. So here is, uh, southwest portion of the town. So you can see the levee railroad and river edge area was not zoned. The little hat with the flood zone, but currently, um, you know, there's the railroad and there's also some other parking activities. Uh, next to the boat ramps, so it's worth, so technically that's not zoned, anything could happen there. Uh, I would recommend that that be zoned soon. Um, on other conversations, you know, I have raised the point that, uh. I've done some research, preliminary research, that, uh, railroads can be taxed by towns. And there is a difference between rolling stock and property tax, but if you're thinking about, um. For instance, uh, there's a train depot there, there's different trucks and, and different materials they have there. Uh, if residents are taxed, I think the railroad should have, you know, equal burden, right? And that's quite a large area. Uh, so I think when we're thinking about real estate tax, we don't think about businesses only, we don't think about houses, but we think about the potential for railroad. Of course, Mr. Bowling, we have to, uh, you know, advise on that specifically, but I've been sharing around some links with, uh, several people and it, it looks like a potential. Consideration.
Well, and do we know for a fact that they're not already being taxed by the county?
Well, just like all properties being taxed by the county, the, the, uh, town tax would be a, an additional tax.
Okay, so you're saying if we had a town tax, we'd also get revenue from the gotcha.
Yeah, so it'd be an equal burden, uh, for this additional town tax layer. Um, so then, um. Sorry, I'll just mention the bottom right-hand corner of this slide, this is where the town, uh, boundary was moved back in. Twenty nineteen, Mr. Bowen did share the document with us. Um, you can see where Alamo County GIS updated that because Alamo County and the town had to agree on that, so Alamo County was very efficient and updated their GIS. Uh, the state of Virginia, um, we understand there's a process of the town, every year has to inform the state of Virginia. It's a, it's a survey, somehow that was maybe missed in twenty nineteen, uh, so that was what we do. Uh, also looking at the commercial, uh, zone uptown, uh, there was the fire station that was added to the town. Was annexed in twenty nineteen, so again, Alamo County GIS, the red line, pick that up. If the state of Virginia GIS did not include that yet, there's also some ambiguity up here. At the back with the supermarkets, so it's important for it, this could be drawing air, it could be a GIS projection, a difference. Projection is a curvature of the earth, technically speaking, how that's GIS meets that, um. So, but there is an overlap there in certain areas, so I think that's worth looking into because we wouldn't wanna, uh, you know. Have discussions with the developer, uh, for instance, Tiger Fuel owns a lot of that land. Uh, and then there is ambiguity in what they could do and what they couldn't do, you know what I mean? Yeah, so I think that we should research that, uh, in the next few months. Okay, um, if there's no questions on that area, I'll, I'll keep moving, um, and I will give the town council an update on this next week. They've requested and, and updated their work, work session. So this is just one of those things that we've been working on in parallel with the company, they're, they're related. Okay, so institutional coordination, we talked about Housing Virginia, uh. We also, uh, just mentioned supervisor prices discussion, uh, and again, Ms. Gill and I met with Supervisor Price. Uh, just to learn and share information, uh, and Supervisor Price understands in the Alamo County. And Supervisor Price understands in the Albemarle County compact process, Scottsville is not clearly represented in a consistent way. You know, sometimes the town boundary is missing on maps, so it's a work. She understands that and she agrees with our point of view. We had other things that we discussed, um, but that was the main focus of the conversation.
So we feel like we have. So that was a positive development on that side of the day. We also had a conversation with the with the uh development staff about following up with that.
Given that Delma is retiring, you know, what what level of efficacy do our discussions with her hold?
I think it's as they keep working on it, but their compliance is probably going to take.
I would.
One or two more years.
Then you reach out to the very, very likely new uh supervisor, like Drew. He's running out of posts, so it's. He's already passed the final deadlines. Uh, so it's safe to assume he's going to be our president.
So would the planning commission be comfortable with us inviting him to, you know, some workshops and maybe can attend everyone, like attend one or two?
And I think it'd be a good opportunity to sort of need some more members too, so they can figure out what they actually can vote for in Oregon State.
Yep. Great, okay, um, thank you for that guidance, this is really worth worthwhile, yep. We'll reach out to him. And uh begin that engagement process and. Okay, um, so. Moving on to Albemarle County recap, so this again is very fresh, uh. I've just summarized the the agenda points uh from this morning and and uh, Miss Cappiano, if you want to add anything, or Javier, of course. Um, on number one, updated our complex, I guess, I gave them updated on our process. And our observations for Scottville in their AC forty four. So uh, we had a candid conversation, I showed them my uh favorite slides. And they they did not say much, but towards the end of the meeting, they they said that they were making more consistent. We even talked about line types and even colors about how the town is shown. Uh, Miss Cappiano, anything to add there?
Um, I think we eased into it slowly, you were very diplomatic in how you handled it, Lincoln. Um. And I look forward to seeing that county sidewalk study that they mentioned. I I would really like to let them know that. Being that we're paying property taxes, we feel that they should be responsible. I think the one thing you didn't say that you may have. Wanted to say is, when you've had conversations with V dot, they tell us they don't really, like, they're happy to talk to us, but we can't submit anything official. And we have to keep going through the county as that channel, which, you know, reinforces the fact that. The county is responsible for our sidewalks here.
Yes, and that's an excellent point because um, I also emailed you regarding the gap grant this afternoon. And uh, phone call with the gap grant. A manager kind of crossed and he called me back later this this afternoon and he. Basically told me the reason our gap grant was not approved uh last year was because we did not have a. Letter from the county supporting the application.
Oh, my goodness.
So I I I was not involved in that, but I do not know if the letter was submitted, but missed or some, don't know. But a simple cover letter would have gotten us a lot of money.
Wow, okay, well, now we know, but wow.
Yeah, so uh, then I asked this gentleman, uh, Jatender Keet. About if we declare an urban development area, would that benefit our grant application chances? He said it wouldn't improve our chances, but it would improve. The number of grant options we could get through the gap, I guess gap has several different streams. One funding challenge is uh towns with urban development areas. So we check that box and then we also check the box with uh, you know, general towns, you know what I mean? So we have more opportunities to get gap grants. But he he sounded really positive and he knew about our application, he. He just said, hey, county letter missing, so.
Wow.
And then other towns.
Maybe sir, and for something that shows the status of the application, why were we in the dark?
Well, I think, you know, basically there's changeover in town administrator.
Yeah.
And also he mentioned, uh, oh, then we'll have Zoom webinars in a couple of months to uh start briefing people about this opportunity. The, it's going to open uh early in twenty twenty four. Um, and then he seemed very open to having conversations about making sure we don't have any gaps again. So that was positive and he just called me back this afternoon, so uh we'll keep that in mind. Uh, keeping rolling on Albemarle County, um. Number two was consultation regarding uh fifteen point two, uh, that's the urban development area, so. Uh, based on Virginia code, we need to consult all the uh jurisdictions that the the town touches or or. Is within regarding urban development area, keyword. Consult, uh, if they tell us that's a terrible idea, we can still proceed if you would like. Um, but basically, uh, the county uh planning director, uh, you know, understood that, you know, UDA can have some benefits in regarding V dot grants, so it's worth. He, so he thought that there was not a lot of downside. Uh, not any downside that he's knowing of, um. The county's initial reaction was that uh it would be beneficial for the town to be have an urban development area. Uh, uh, of course, they're going to check the code if there's any other responsibilities that they have, I think that's responsible of them, so uh. That's great, I'm going to share the slides that we showed them, um. So overall, that's very positive, I mean, I have a a few other insights that I didn't put on the slide, but uh, you know. They uh told us that they've been considering Scottsville because Scottsville is showing up in a lot of their surveys more recently. So our advocacy has improved. Uh, and some of that feedback has said, why don't you develop Southern Albemarle County a little more? And they admitted during our meeting that Scottsville provides a tremendous number of services. So, you know, I think they they think out of the box sometimes and they're like, why not, you know. Maybe in the long term have some development outside of Scottsville's boundary. So that'd be on the fringe of Scottsville. So I uh quickly uh gave them my opinion that, oh, thanks for considering that, but that would not be, you know, good for the the near term. Because, you know, the county indicating some development area right outside our boundary could suck development away from Scottsville and put it in a county. We've also.
Well.
Go ahead.
But but I mean, that's not a bad thing because that provides parking that we don't have in town. And, I mean, we'll lose out on business revenue, but it's still a draw, it's still going to draw people to the community.
Well, it's not the worst idea in the world, but it is.
It would create a conflict, but then we met with um, you know, a developer this morning and uh. He uh, or they were talking about uh the difference between developing in Scottsville versus developing in a county. And he is very glad to be uh having conversations with the the town of Scottsville, I guess I could phrase that way.
Yeah.
So based on, and I've heard that around the 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 area that. Scottsville, uh, even though it's a small community, it's much more efficient to do business here in terms of development than. Dealing with the county processes, yeah. So I think that's very positive for the town. Yeah.
Well, this whole conversation itself, it was sort of a little positive, I think it went in the way that we thought it would. Is just to have a conversation, you know, open up that dialogue and. And make them, you know, start the dialogue that brings them and their responsibilities to our area. So that's great, that's really positive.
And uh, so. To that point, we'll try to keep up that communication channel. But we're going to look at talking to them again in November, December, um, as as we firm up some stuff on our side. And they also continue their process. So uh, that should be helpful to be constantly on the radar for them and probably beneficial for us.
And they asked us if there's any concerns that the town has in the surrounding area of the county and, you know, the turkey. Turkey uh farm came up, but. Uh, we talked about this large campground uh on the Albemarle uh Pluvana boundary, uh. They're they're willing to share more information like similar to that, if there's another large development proposal coming up in the area, uh, they'll give us a heads up. So overall, I think this this conversation was really positive in terms of building a bridge with the town. Um, and then, uh, you know, Commissioner Price also mentioned uh to me that, you know, the the one of the deputy administrative positions in the uh county is currently vacant because someone is tired. The county is uh currently bringing in a new person. So once that new person is in that role, the portfolios are sorted out a little bit more. Uh, sometime in January or so, it might be the right time to engage at uh administrator level. And with the broader umbrella uh between the town and the and the county.
Yeah, so some of that is firming up staff to staff conversations now pay off, uh, as much as, you know, like that. An appointed official should be talking across to each other, the virtue you guys will have and feel comfortable doing that. Uh, with 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 anybody that you would consider peers, um, that's a positive development for me with my peers, other staff, so. I can only think we've opened up a door for, we start adding questions in next month or two.
So our next conversation with them will be in November, December, uh, that's when they'll have uh their draft uh comp plan. Materials a little bit further along, specifically on services, because they know services are very important, if you talked about the library. So so forth, so that they're really willing to share with us that information, get our feedback. So, um, yeah, I just had to say that the conversation was very positive, uh, staff to staff level. We thank this Cottabiano for for joining too, we really, uh, I think Scottsville really showed up for that meeting today. Okay, uh, anything else to to mention on that, Miss Cottabiano? We'll continue.
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, so further consultations for urban development area, um, we just finished Albemarle County, uh, we'll get their. Their final response uh by email. Pluvana County will circle back, uh, Buckingham County, since it technically touches the town on Pluvana side at least. We will consult, um, Ms. Ms. Carter's uh former colleagues. Uh, his name's Mister Carter, uh, different family, but. So we're just really excited to to meet more Buckingham County folks after enjoying working with this Carter, um. We'll circle back with Thomas Jefferson, planning district commission, because that's also a requirement to consult them and let them know our. Our potential step forward on urban development. Uh, the county did inquire uh today whether we. Thinking about indicating the whole town as an urban development area or uh areas of the town, that that's a very excellent question. Uh, my initial response was, uh, since Scottsville is relatively small area and, for instance, the discussion with V dot. When we develop certain areas of, you know, housing in the town, uh, the the intersections are right in the middle of town, they need to be upgraded anyway, right? Whether it be on Valley or, you know, twenty or six, uh. So I I would recommend at this point in time, all of the town. But we could have future conversations of carving out certain areas, the problem is, let's say we carve out the historic district. You wouldn't have uh Valley Street as a portion of Austin, at least as a development area, and you couldn't uh get these curb cuts that we we were talking about to slow traffic, right? So we had to think about these considerations, so we understand one of the significant traffic safety concerns is Valing. And one of that aspects is the, you know, the speed of vehicles right down here, right? So we carve out the historic district, then you lose that money that could be put there to calm traffic, yeah. So I think tho- those are the the conversation we have to have.
To weigh options and come back with a little bit more information about that is.
Okay, so the next uh update to the town council will be a work session on September eleventh, so I'll give them a a much briefer version of this presentation. Um, and talk about our our schedule for these workshops and really get them to sign up also to to attend, um. And the planning commission meeting will be on October second, and we'll do that together with the business consultation workshop. So two meetings in one evening.
Yeah.
Uh, and we will, of course, continue these consultations with these different uh institutional stakeholders and. I'll send around in materials from the planning commission to go out to their events too. So that's. Basically, everything on the sixty slides, thanks so much, Bill, for me. Any any um thoughts and comments?
Our contribution was, again, your contribution was just hours and hours of work. But, and here.
Thanks so much for your guidance, I mean, this, I think uh we're we're making great steps, uh, of course, this is a challenging process.
Yeah.
We could have just updated the the text document and and been done in a, you know, in a month or two, but I think this is the right. The right thing that's for the town so long term to do.
Well, and especially with these boundary considerations with the different GIS boundary lines and things like that, um. That's a great thing to look at and to nail down, um. And didn't feel like it was going to be part of the scope of this, but um, really positive.
Well, you know, in Mister Bowling's view, everything relies back to the uh legal documents, but the problem is. When a developer comes to town, no one wants to go digging through legal documents at the courthouse. A zoning map is is basically a summary of all that information for easy reference, right? So that's, I think, what a town needs and legally has to produce an accurate zoning map.
So, impressed. Thank you.
Hey, so that that concludes old business, any new business?
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening.
I will second that, all right, meeting adjourned.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Missioner Strasner, uh, Chair Strasner, for your excellent facilitation of our meeting.
Thank you, everybody, y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you. Hey, please, so they stand.